I'd like to call the meeting to an end. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I shared with you some communication I got from Bosse's. So I think I've all said there. There's no other communication than I have. Report of board and committees. We can start with Mr. Regal with the audit committee.
The audit committee met on January 14th with Mary Young from Lumsden McCormick, who's our internal auditor, and we went over our updated risk assessment for 2020. We have made significant progress since I've been on the audit. And I don't want to call them issues, but things that come up has significantly decreased. There was a couple of things this year, and I think they've all corrected, but it was just IRS filings on employee contractors. And then the other one had to do with wing cap and having employees be restricted only to work their job hours. And there seems to always be kind of an ongoing debate with the payment cards or the school credit for that. Mrs. Zinsski has been referring to both of those. I guess that's really important. Alyssa's got some that's been reviewed personally.
It's great to hear. Policy committee, Mrs. Aaron.
Yeah, we met a couple of weeks ago. It was the 27th. We met primary policy. We spent most time on, there's a new policy, there's a first read titled Mine and Sex Discrimination. Because the Department of Education, there are new laws and it is right policies to make sure that we're following the law. We also had a policy for sports athletic program that cover that too. And also spent time talking about the use of email in the district, just because we're more dependent on technology and have to be more diligent just to have the policies in place and have to train the staff to know really what to be on the lookout for. So be careful with emails and use of technology in the district. So those are the primary policies and everything else we learned.
Great. Mrs. Goldbach, ECASB.
Yes, so there was a Britton's event last week with ECASB that I attended. We assume, you know, I think many of us have heard Britton's over the years and he pretty much was saying the same thing. But he did send out our sheet, which is absolutely unintelligible unless you actually were on the call and were following along what he was talking about. And, you know, obviously the bottom line is, you know, we're in a really tough situation, every district is, based on federal funding and state funding. A lot of the things that he talked about in terms of what we should be doing, we're already doing because of our fabulous leadership team. So, you know, we're doing all the right things. You know, there was information that was sent out, a recap of the event from Dave Lowry with the presentation. So maybe we didn't get that and send that to them, but the information is there. The other thing that I wanted to point out, I am on the awards committee for the ECASB. And every year there are various recognition awards that are available to board members, friends of ECASB, there's the collaboration award that we won in the past. So the nominations are open and there's just about three weeks, three and a half weeks left. And there's some good stuff. You know, there's a lot of awards available to write on the website. We've all received it by email. They're in Dave's update every week. And we should make sure that we're considering all of the award options available, if there's anybody who should be nominated for an award. And the nominations are pretty low every year. There's, you know, it would be really nice to see more districts provide more nominations. So it would be great if we could just take a look at those and keep those in mind.
Can you put that on our follow-up action? That is maybe to send out one of the portable items, you know, to have us look at.
I feel it's a second, you know, for Dave, because like somebody has a nomination form. Yeah, probably.
Okay.
All right, let me go right into the superintendent's.
Well, Mrs. Goldbach's comments are a nice segue into our most recent budget update. Probably one of the most unusual executive budget proposals that have taken place, and that's from folks who have been doing this a lot longer than I have, especially at the VISCUS level. There's a gentleman by the name of Bob Lowry who has been following state finances for years. And he commented in a webinar I participated on that this is probably the most unusual executive proposal that we've ever seen. And there's still a lot of uncertainty, but we do have a couple of things that are clearer. So Mrs. Zinsski will walk us through our current budget as it stands today, knowing that we have a long way to go here still.
Thank you. Number two, I think, we put in number two, we're going. All right. So similar to our presentation, we'll review revenues, expenditures, and overall budget forecast, summarize some of the key points, and then new this time, we're going to dive into the executive proposal a little bit deeper as superintendent now reference. There's some significant changes that we want everyone to be aware of. And then, of course, if the board has any questions. All information that's highlighted in blue has been changed from our last presentation so that you can easily identify information that's very forward and information that's updated. So on our revenue side, we have changes to our property tax levy. Our tax cap calculation is projected to be about 3.15%. This is due to the change in CPI. Previously, we were using an estimated CPI of 1.4 and now CPI is set at 1.23. This is the part of the calculation that everyone refers to as the 2%, and it's very rarely 2%, it's often lower than that. And then in addition to that, we're able to add our capital exclusion, which is the difference between our debt service payments and the revenue that we will bring in to help offset those. So because our voters approve our capital expenditures, we're allowed to take that difference and add it onto the tax levy, because it's already been voted on by our committee. In state aid, we normally at this point will plug in a lot of the governor's numbers in our January runs. We decided not to do that this year because they are not as clear as we would like them to be. We did change our state aid allocation and building aid because we believe that it'll stay pretty flat to what it is this year, and that will include half a year of aid for next year for our citizens on. But we did increase it 381,000 because we do believe that that will be an increase in Bosse's aid, and that'll be from the IPA that we approved this year and from the capital project payment we'll be making for Bosse's project. So they were able to work their project payments so that we make the payment in July, but we receive the aid in June, which is great because it's the same fiscal year. Where normally any payments that you made to Bosse's, you don't get the aid until the subsequent year. So you really need to be able to cover those costs. But because that's such a large purchase for all of the districts, we're able to get that aid in the same fiscal year, way at the end of the fiscal year, but still the same fiscal year. Our miscellaneous revenues are decreasing about 7%. So in our previous presentation, that was a higher decrease, and that change is due to our Erie County sales tax. So we had assumed about 90% revenue on Erie County sales tax. So far this year, it's coming in around 95, 96%. So I changed it up to 95%, which was an add back to our budget of about 180,000. So the decrease originally was about 360,000. So to be a little bit more accurate where we are right now, we bumped it back up to 95%, which is a decrease of 180. And then our transfers. In our past presentation, we had included funds that are sitting in our debt service fund, which is interest from our capital project. We're going to apply that to next year's budget. We're going to be setting this year's budget to offset some of our aid payments, which will help increase our convalence of the million a year and make the funds more available to help support next year's budget. So overall, we're looking at a 1.66% increase in revenue, which is about $1 million. So it's pretty close to $1 million. A large portion of that is coming from our allowable tax levy calculation and then a little bit from state aid. Now, that may change. Hopefully in April, we'll get some updated state aid runs. We'll be able to see some more of that detail, but for now, we're trying to be very conservative so that we're not projecting too high and then having to be spending next year if there's a large gap. Keeping in mind, still we will anticipate a reduction in transportation aid because we're not spending as much this year, but we left those numbers steady so that we don't have peaks and valleys in our revenue budget from year to year. And if needed, we have that upward gradient convalence ready to help fill that gap. On the expenditure side, we have some changes in benefits because the TIRS rate was finalized. The original projections were between 9.5 and 10%. Current year is 9.53. We were projecting 9.5 and it came in at 90. So that was an increase in our expenditures of about $80,000. Health insurance is a very exciting area. Our current budget is $7.1 million and we projected a 3% increase, took it up to 7.3. But when our numbers came in, even with estimating for COVID increases, our prescriptions are doing great, our rebates are doing great, and our budget came in at 6.9. So we were able to shave about $400,000 off our December presentation, which was great. The health insurance committee has done a lot of work. We've been working with Premier to try and help control those costs and have implemented a lot of new programs. And still, Mr. Blythe needs a lot of those meetings, working with our employees and teachers to try to help teach them about different ways that we can save money in that area. So we're starting to see some of the benefits of that.
I think that's one area the pandemic has benefited us. You know, A, people walking around with these are more likely to be healthier. And then B, Mike put on a big push last year to switch everybody to auto renew mail-in pharmacy prescriptions. And that helped because there was motivation for people to do that at the time, and it causes for greater rebates for us as a district and for our overall performance.
And one of our concerns was that a lot of people didn't get elected procedures in the current year. So we are seeing a slated lower expenditure in our budget, but we were worried that all of those procedures are still going to get done, but now they're all going to be next year. So we do have some pushing in next year's budget, anticipating some of those expenses will come in the next year. And those are actually incorporated into the 6.9 budget, so that was great. Workers' compensation, our premium is going up about 7, 8%. Even though the actual premiums for the consortium are only going up 1%, our experience rating is causing our premiums to go a little higher. So the modification rate's what, three years' worth of experience? So every year, one year falls off and a new year comes on. So we've had a really great year fall off and then a bad year come on, which is why our modification rating went up a little bit. But we were able to work that into the budget. On the instruction side, there's a minor change between transportation and instruction in the area of athletics. We took some funds out of the athletic transportation budget and moved them up into the instruction budget to help support the needs of the team. It didn't end up in an overall increase for our budget because it was a reduction in another area, but it did change these numbers, so we pointed it out. Bosse's was a large area of change for us during this presentation. Earlier, our projections were, I think, about 23, 24% of an increase. We had our participation meeting at the end of January with all of the departments of the district. The administrative team looked at the services that we think we're going to use next year, what programs we're going to need for our students, and we were able to knock that increase down from 24% to 16%. Still utilizing all the services that our kids need, we didn't have to cut any programming. We have the second payment for our IPA and we have the payment for our second IPA if we choose to move forward with the replacement plan in there. So that was a decrease to our budget of about 175,000. So that was a nice gap closer for us. And then on transportation, the only change here was that shift of money up into the instruction line to help support the needs of our athletic program. Debt service was a larger increase previously, but one of the payments that we had slated to make next year for interest, we're actually making this year. So it reduced our debt service next year down to about 4%. So overall, our expenditures are looking to increase just over 3% from 62.4 million to 64.3 million, which is about a $1.9 million increase. Now again, these are still, this is still a budget in graph form. We have no personnel changes, no program changes. We'll be talking about those areas in our presentation. So overall, we have a $64.3 million budget, which does represent an $858,000 gap, but in December, our gap was 1.3 million. So we were able to close that through these operational changes by about $450,000. So our revenues are going up $1 million, 1.6%, and our expenditures are going up about 1.9 or 3%. The majority of that is personnel benefits, Bosse's increase and our debt service increase. We still do have a gap, 859,000, and that does assume the exact same level of reserves and fund balance that we have in our budget. So that truly shows a year-to-year change in expenditures without the fluctuation of how we're closing these gaps. And then our gap closers remain the same, increases to state aid, any program or salary changes from reductions or retirements, and option to increase our fund balance allocation, and then the decision to go above the cap, if that's something the board is interested in discussing, or appropriating additional monies from reserves. We have time for that. We'll make those decisions in April. So new this year, this time, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what was in the governor's proposal. We could talk all night about some of the things that were in there, but we've chosen four topics in particular to point out to you so that you're aware of what we're looking at when we look at these numbers. So the first red flag is the fact that foundation aid is frozen yet again. So this is the amount of money that the state determines every district needs to provide sound, basic education for all students. So not only is this money frozen from 1920 school year, which is now two years of freeze, and if you think about our contracts and our utilities and our expenses, none of them froze for two years, but it's also not even fully funded. So I know Superintendent Palad did a presentation for you last year showing you that our allocation of our foundation aid that's actually due to us was about 59%. So not only is it way underfunded, but now they're not even giving little increases from year to year. And that's the category of aid that is the most flexible for us for usage because it's not based on an expense, it's not based on a capital project, it's just your foundation aid to provide an education. And that's being frozen now for the second year in a row.
And it's a large category.
Yeah, it's sort of $7,000 to us.
Yeah, so that will be a major focus when we meet with our legislators after the February break. President Steinway and Vice President Aronson, Mrs. Zinsski and I plan to meet with newly-elected Senator Rath and Mrs. McMahon, Assembly member, to talk to them about some of these things that you'll hear about from the executive proposal, but also we don't want to forget about the fact that our foundation aid is only 59% of what it should be. And if you recall, you know, there are some districts that are overfunded as it relates to foundation aid in our region, you know, that are in full harness now, where they're still getting increases, but they've received over 100% of their full foundation aid amount. My contention to them, or my question to them is how are you going to fix this? Because if we just keep letting the formula run, the way it's running, it's not getting fixed. You know, somebody needs to stop the machine and point a finger at a particular district and say, this needs something moved from here to here to address this because the formula is not addressing it. We just keep staying behind the eight ball. So I think we've made some progress pre-pandemic in talking to Assembly Member McMahon, and she had joined forces with other Assembly members throughout the state with districts. I think there was like 40 of us across the state that were in a similar situation, and they were trying to join forces to get it addressed. So we need to resurrect that initiative again.
Well, I also think that making it absolutely clear and, you know, that we live in a town with three school districts, and the discrepancy amongst those three districts in percentages is astronomical. And we by far get much less than the other districts get.
That's a very good point.
I mean, it's not even close. So, you know, I mean, if you ask me, I think we need to get the word out. I don't know any of those, you know, well, to me, I think it's one of the most important, you know, things that we have in front of us.
I agree.
So the second topic that we want to bring to your attention is the proposal to lump all expenses together into one category called servicing aid. So initially, you might not think that's a big deal. What difference does it make if it's broken out into little categories or if it's all one? There is a significant reason that it makes a difference, and I will give you a couple of examples in a minute. But the aids that are included in this lumping of services aid are transportation aid, Bosse's aid, building aid, excess cost aid, and instructional materials aid. So there are a handful of others, but none that our district receives, so I didn't include those. But what I want to point out is that these are the aids that we have the most control over. They're based on what we spend. So we purposefully buy from Bosse's so that we get the aid the next year. All of these aids were generated or created for a specific reason. It was either to help districts offset a mandate, transportation, providing specialized services to students with high needs, or to help districts save money, which is why Bosse's was created. So now to take all of that away and to lump it together, potentially cap it, would be detrimental to districts, but especially us because we focus on that so much. So here are a couple of examples of how, just to be the one proposal to harm us. Take our current transportation. In 1920, our transportation aid was about 2.3 million, and that was pretty typical for us. It goes up a tiny bit every year based on our expenses for transportation. But in the current year, we're expecting a large decrease, 1.6 million. We knew that would be coming because we spent much less, we spent about $1 million less last year. But if this is the year that all the aids are capped, so all the aids are frozen where they are, and the next year you only get a 2% increase, we would lose that 700,000 in aid even though next year's expenses could totally go back to normal. And we would never regain that, we would never recoup it. That would be a year after year after year decrease. The second example, also transportation, let's take COVID right out of it because everyone's going to say that things are weird or different levels because of COVID. In our current year, in a normal year, budgeted for next year, 3.5 million in transportation expenses. That's a normal budget for us. All of our buses are running, five days a week, athletics, field trips, everything's going. Typically, we would get about $2.3 million in aid. Our aid ratio is 70%, but there's always some field trips or different things that are addable. So I use a 65% ratio just to be conservative. Let's say the next year, when we need to go out to bid our transportation contract, it increases by 2%. I don't know if it would, but it could. That would be an increase of 357,000. In a normal year with expense-based aids, 65% of that, our aid for the following year would be 2.5 million, which is an increase of $232,000. But if our aid was frozen and capped at only a 2% increase, then the aid would come in at 2.37 million, which is a decrease of 186,000 of what we would normally have earned. And again, that just compounds year after year after year. Our contracts are always going to go up, whether it's CPI, 1.5% or a year that we have to go out to bid and we have a larger jump. But if our aid is never matching that, all that extra money is absorbed by our budgeted by our bank.
And this was proposed in last year's executive budget also, you may recall, and the governor was proposing to freeze it not after last year, but after this year. He's now proposed in this budget the same thing, but to freeze it after the current year and not delay it a year. So hopefully this is something, again, another focal point of our conversation with our legislators that doesn't end up getting adopted in the final budget.
So, and this is only an example in one of the aids. We would have the same experiences with any of our expense-based aids as they go up. If they go up more than whatever that cap would be, we would need to absorb the difference. So this is one of the reasons when you hear people talking in the news or business officials are all freaking out about the state aid runs, this is why. So a third topic we wanted to bring to your attention is that the STAR payment is added to the state aid runs. So STAR money is the funds that the state contributes to the local levy to help reduce the burden to the taxpayers. So right now, that is taken right off as what we levy our taxpayers. It's never been included in the state aid before. So by including it now, it made it look like we were receiving over $20 million in aid, which isn't truly the case because that STAR money was always there. It's based on the actual bills of our taxpayers. Some people get credit on their bill, a pay-reduced bill. New homeowners have to pay the full bill and then wait for your refund. But in either way, it's not state aid that was ever included in our budgets before. And finally, the COVID stimulus payment versus the local district funding. So these are also two lines in our budget. COVID stimulus payment was the federal dollars that were pushed to schools, it was about $4 billion for New York State. Our allocation was just over $2.8 million, which would have been fantastic to help offset not only the expenses we've already had this year to bring our kids back in hybrid, but also to implement summer programming and recovery programs for our kids moving forward. But there was another line on our state aid of the exact same amount, which was a reduction just showing that the state took all of that money and used it to plug the gap that New York State has in their budget. Why is this important? This one's really important as well because what is going to happen next year when our federal stimulus isn't there? If the government, if New York State uses that $4 billion to help close its gap and that money is gone next year, are we going to have another reduction of 2.8 million without the offset of the federal rate? And then what are we going to do? It's been referred to as a financial cliff and being compared to the financial stress that districts felt, I believe it was in '07, '08, when era funds came out and the Job Restoration Act came out and people were being laid off and positions were being cut. We don't want to have to go back there. We don't, we want to make sure that we're We don't, we want to make sure that we're preparing as much as possible now, which is why we're going to recommend to the board that we continue to maintain our unappropriated fund balance above 4% because that will help us slowly absorb cuts that may come from the state. It'll help us not decimate programming, not have to do large-scale layoffs. We don't know what's going to happen. There's still a lot more information to come out. But we want to be prepared and want to always be looking forward. We always talk about avoiding peaks and valleys, and this is another tool and mechanism that we have for something that is out of our control, and that's our state aid.
Yeah, the interesting thing is, we have seen this before, as you mentioned, in the form of the gap elimination adjustment, which, for those of you who are on the board, you know we fought for several years to get that removed. And that's similar to what's happening here. If federal dollars are pushed through and then subsequently reduced in equal amounts when those federal dollars are gone, if that remains, then that's almost the same thing as the gap elimination adjustment that we've already lived through. So we really want to make sure we're poising ourselves for multiple years out and building our unappropriated fund balance as high as we can now. You know, 4% is the limit, but I would gladly take the slap on the hand if they came and asked us why we were exceeding it. This district needs to remain viable and offer the programs that the community is accustomed to. We can't afford to lose a significant amount of funding and still off the level of educational services we offer. You know, the other thing that's on the horizon too is what this next stimulus package that is being proposed by the current administration may bring, the $1.9 trillion package. So the governor, when he presented his budget, did it in two scenarios. You know, if we, if New York gets $6 billion from the feds, you know, that's sort of the picture we're looking at here. Or if New York gets $15 million from the feds, then it would be a different picture. But again, there's still, at this point, some concern about issuing all of that money all at once to school districts. So if they do not, if they don't continue to parcel it out over multiple years and they don't make any changes to how reserves can be used and allocated, then our recommendation would be just keep it in unappropriated fund balance because that would be the best place for us to be able to use it as a tool to offset future years and potentially a future cliff. So there's definitely more to come. It should be an interesting budget season. I know the governor has a number of things on the docket that he's looking to get approved. So hopefully, there are some good and spirited negotiations at that level that allows a give-and-take on both sides.
Mrs. Bezinski, I just want to say, I liked your presentation. I think it's good how you showed us what could happen from the budget and stuff. I don't think I've seen that before, so that was really helpful.
All right, thank you so much.
Good job. That's all of the superintendent's report. I think...
Okay, we will need a motion for new business.
I have a motion for new business items E1, A through N, 2, A through E, and 3, B through H.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through N, 2, A through E, and 3, B through H, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Custodi, do we have follow-up action items?
I have one item, to provide a summary and nomination forms for ECASB awards to the board members.
Great. That will need a motion to be moved to executive session.
I'll make a motion to be moved to executive session for items regarding litigation, collective bargaining negotiations with the Empress Launch Employees Association and employment of particular workers.
Second, Mr. Villo. All in favor of being moved to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Patrick, thank you for coming.